So, sir.
And they, and they actually made me feel better. I hit, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. What he said?
He said, "What do we make?" And I said, "Uh, unless we're going to be wood stiffer." Right?
Actually, he's got, he got-
But you're not wood stiffer that much.
Actually, he's got paper on the drawers. We'll look at that. And what he said, "I'm gonna have to hand up this fruit too, though." That's pretty good. It's zero calories. It's got all this starch. And it's sweet and super loose, which ain't that bad. It's super, it's not that something else. It's nice and, it's pretty good. I like the flavor. I'm pretty bad. I always find the powder, I'm, I'm great, I own a big glass. I, I put in there, mix it with, I like the flavor. Sometimes-
You're into the Mios?
Yeah. I like those Mios. I got the, I like that, of course, they're a little salty. I like the liquid out there. You gotta be, you, you need to be working if you're gonna make that liquid out there because it's full of salt. And you gotta sweat it out.
Same device, uh, she makes these, what was I talking about? When she takes little Mios and left it, and, and puts parmesan cheese in the bottom of it, in a deal pickle slides, and bakes it. And that cheese melts like fried pickles, but with cheese. She takes that little Mios and left it, and, and puts- With the little syrup.
I won't be able to make sense of that. She's saying, "Oh, yeah."
You know, that kind of stuff, oh, well, I can deal with it. I feel like you want the rest of it. Mios with parmesan cheese. It puts pickles, which is what I-
Father, we are grateful to you for every day that you bring to us, the opportunities that exist within them. Lord, we pray that as we gather together here to conduct the business of this county, that you give us wisdom, discernment, and everything we say and do will be honorable to you and beneficial to the residents of Avery County. We thank you for all your blessings amidst the storm around us and all the people who are in need even now. Father, we pray your hand upon them. Thank you for your compassion and your care and your grace and mercy. We ask in Christ's name, amen.
Let's stand and say it again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, this is 3.2, our overall session. Boxer Mason and Marge, Mr. Chairman?
We have none.
Okay, we'll move to 3.2B, public comments, before we even want to read something for you here. You may know this because there's a bit of a change in our public comment policy. It has been the intent of the board, the members of the vote, to have only one public comment for agenda items, and that is reflected in our policy and on the sign-up sheets out front. Another change is having the agenda comment period after the public comment period. We hope that these changes will improve the flow of the meetings while providing the public the opportunity to make comments. And before we get started, I'll read the public comment policy. The time limit for any comment of the board is three minutes. Board members not expected to comment or take any action or matter during public comment. Any individual speaking during public comment shall address the entire board. Any person who will, interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the schedule will be asked to leave immediately. If you would like to speak to an agenda item speaking of public comment, you must sign up on the sheets at the door. Time limit to speak to an agenda item is also three minutes. Speakers are allowed to speak once during public comment and on one agenda item. Please silence all cell phones, electronic devices. Okay, we have Chris Burns making a comment.
Yes, sir. From right here?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I've introduced myself to most of you, but just wanted to let everyone know that we are with Congressman Chuck Edwards' office. We've been representing you now for the past four days, since last Friday when he was sworn in to the 119th Congress. And I'm Chris Burns. I'm district director. I'm based out of Hendersonville. We've been up here today and tomorrow doing office hours, and I want to introduce two other staff here. This is Madeline Lehman. She is our senior caseworker. Anybody who's dealing with FEMA claims or other federal issues, you're likely going to talk to Madeline. And this is Tommy Lauder. Tommy is our regional field rep, and he is over the eight counties out here, nine counties now, I guess, including Mitchell and Avery, and we're excited to be here. So we did office hours today in what we call the Carolina Cruiser, which is our congressional mobile vehicle. Today, we were in Newland and Banner Elk, and then tomorrow we'll be in Spruce Pond. And are we in Spruce Pond both?
We're in Bakersville first and then Spruce Pond second.
Okay, so come by and see us if you like. If it doesn't snow us out, we don't have four-wheel drive on that thing, so we'll see how good it does. But anyway, we're pleased and proud to be here supporting and representing y'all, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to 3.2C, public comment on agenda items, and I see nobody. 3.2D, board appointments, the Avery County Transportation Advisory Board, and I think Woody is willing to take that position.
Yeah, Commissioner Young and I have spoken. He will take the position if no one else is interested in the position. And he does apologize. He is stuck in traffic, but on his way from boot, so.
And we need a motion to approve that board.
I move that we appoint Woodhull Young, Jr., as our representative on the Transportation Advisory Board.
Give a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Page number... The 3.2V2 is review of effort for the Northwest Regional Housing Authority.
Yes, so for your review and consideration, and you can vote on this at the next meeting, it has been recommended that Mr. Troy Clark be named as a board member back on the Northwest Regional Housing Authority Board. So that's for review, and we will take that up at our next public session.
Next is review of effort for the Avery Airport Authority.
So Dempsey Clark has resigned his position for this, and we need someone to finish out this term, which expires August of 2025, and we do have an application from Billy Clay Wiseman that is also for review, and we will take that up at our next public meeting.
3.2E is the public hearing for the 2021 CDDG Neighborhood Rev逾 program close-up hearing, and we will move on and we'll take that up at 6:30. So we'll move on to 3.3, county commissioner and staff items, A, tax manager, state support, and return.
Please approve my collections for December of $5,568,388.63.
Motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm proud of them. They've worked hard. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
May I vote a please? Thank you.
Thanks.
Move to 3.3B, resolutions for the funding of repairs and strategic implementation of the Blue Ridge Parkway.
So commissioners, the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation is requesting a million five of a state appropriation to be implemented for the strategic plan of the Blue Ridge Rising strategic plan. That's a whole lot of works. They have met in Avery County. I was part of the meeting when they did have the one in Avery County. It was well received. The implication of their strategic plan includes marketing strategies, unifying the region's voice, increasing protection of the views in the wildlife, and most importantly, enhance the visitor's experience, because if you've been across the Parkway lately, you see the potholes and you see the problems. So this is just the North Carolina, Virginia, the Blue Ridge Parkway Foundation's part of saying, get this million five from the state and then let's go to the federal government because of the economic impact that the Blue Ridge Parkway has. So before you, for your approval tonight, is a resolution. It does not commit the county to any money. This is simply going to go to the state to ask them for their support on funding for repairs, implementation of the Blue Ridge Rising strategic plan, collaboration and support, and coalition creation. So if it pleases the board, we will adopt this as sixth day of January 2025, and ask the chair to sign.
Need a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt the resolution. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, board.
Okay, this is 3.4, county commissioner reports a request, A, county manager report, Philip Berry.
Okay, board, first of all, will be my update on the... Again, I want to thank the citizens. I want to thank Avery County, the people, the churches, the fire departments, all the county employees, all the nonprofits, the resorts, and the businesses. Unbelievable support, and we would be in really bad shape if it wasn't for that support, so a sincerely thank you, thank you. I want a special shout-out to volunteer Avery, Avery Family Impact, Ram Frac, Habitat, and Feeding Avery Families. They have been here. They've been established. People know where they are, and they're doing their part, and they're rolling up their sleeves. So I just want to say thanks to them. There've been a couple of new ones. The Avery County Long-Term Recovery Team. Could not ask for a better team. Could not ask for better support of people giving up their time to be on that team, and part of those efforts is the Bridges for Avery, which last Sunday, when the foot bridges were washed out, seven different families were washed out again from their foot bridge. Those are getting replaced today, so some of those got replaced this weekend. So just wanted to say out loud, and we couldn't do that without Dogwood Trust and Amy Wellness. So just thanks to everyone on that. Want to talk about distribution for a moment. The county is transitioning to allow our nonprofits to take that role. We don't have the staff, and we do not have the facility, so if there are needs, you can still call 733-8273 if it is a hurricane-related need that's not an emergency. We will put you with the nonprofit that can help with that need, but we are going to transition and give those responsibilities back to those nonprofits. And if there's any questions about that, there will be a press release coming out soon about that transition. I want to remind the citizens, individual assistance has been extended to February 6, 2025, and I encourage you to go to the Avery-Maylin campus, which is right beside the Board of Education. They are there from 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night, Monday through Friday, and on Saturdays from 9:00 to 2:00. I'm a firm believer that yes, you can do it on the computer, and yes, you can do it on the phone, but if you'll go in person, you get some help in one-on-one individual assistance, okay? Want to talk about hazard mitigation, which is the acquisitions and the elevations of land and the stabilization of land. There are... There is, sorry, is information on our Facebook post, Avery County Government Facebook, about that, but there is a day that you can go to the Maylin main campus, so this is at the Avery Mitchell Line, to the main campus anytime between 9:00 and 6:00 on January 16th for that. I have had a couple of people come and ask me questions about the applications. I'm going to need to go to that meeting that day also at some point to learn about these applications. And something that's very confusing on the application is it asks about damages, and it says home. If your land was damaged, you filed under home, because they consider the land which you live and your home was on your home. So I know that's confusing. That's something that we will try to push out through social media and other things. That application is hard to do, so again, here is a day to go and sit down with someone that can help you through those applications. Our debris numbers. The debris company has been at it for 68 days since the storm, okay? It's been 97 days since the storm, or 100 probably now, but they have picked up 152,534 cubic yards of debris. And to give you an idea, at our December meeting, they were at 93,000. So work is being done. It's ugly. It's painful, but we've got to get through it together. So let's be patient with the debris. Other than that, that's all I have. Any questions from the board?
When we do transition and close distribution, did you mention those five nonprofits?
So the five nonprofits that we'll be working with will be Avery Family Impact, Ram, that's always, you know, Feeding Avery Families, Habitat, and Volunteer Avery. Okay, and we will push that out through social media.
Okay, let's move to 3.4B, finance office, for Mr. Caleb Hodges.
Yes, good afternoon, board. Item number one, the Department of Social Services has received a special allocation of $77,716 from the state to fund three disaster recovery programs and $80,695 in disaster energy funding. Request the board to accept this allocation and approve the following budget amendment to debit miscellaneous $77,716, debit county energy assistance program $80,695, and credit county welfare revenue line $158,411.
And we need a motion to accept the grant and approve the following budget amendment.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I should preface, some of that money will be upfront and some of it will be reimbursed, reimbursement basis. Item number two, the Department of... Item number two, the Department of Emergency Management has received insurance reimbursement for the Forest River Bathroom Trailer. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment to debit auto supplies, ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-four cents. And credit insurance reimbursements, ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-four cents.
Need a motion to approve.
Move on. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, the Department of Emergency Management received a cyber security grant in FY 2023-24 for ninety-three dollars from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety to help the county assess, create, and implement policies and procedures to prevent and protect against cyber attacks. This budget amendment is needed to move the remaining funding forward into the current budget year. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment to debit EM grants, seventy thousand, seven hundred and five dollars, and credit fund balance appropriated, seventy thousand, seven hundred and five dollars.
In the efforts of accuracy, I believe that was ninety-three thousand dollars.
Yes.
It was ninety-three dollars.
Ninety-three dollars. Add three zeros to that, ninety-three thousand dollars. We ain't going to get much done for ninety-three dollars. Ninety-three thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And thanks to this man to my left, who's going to be taking care of a little more than ninety-three dollars to get all this implemented. He's got a lot of work ahead of him. That's all I have for y'all today.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move to 3.4C, county attorney report, Ms. Michelle Ford. Do you have anything?
I do not have anything that requires the board's attention today.
3.5 staff report and request, none of those?
There's not any, Mr. Chair.
3.6 close session?
I do not have any.
Let us do 3.7 approval of minutes December the second, 2024 regular meeting. Need a motion to approve.
Move on.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye too. 3.8, agenda consent items, any questions or concerns, help those? Anybody? If not, this should be, will be approved by consent. 3.9 informational items, have you done?
There's not any.
How about 3.10 at county meetings? Those are on the...
February 3rd will be our next regular meeting. I would hope to be, I better not say it. So yeah, we'll let you know where that's going to be. If anybody got a wood stove, extra wood stove.
So February 3rd, March 3rd, and April 6th, okay? And that's at six o'clock. And all county officers will concern the following holiday, January twenty, twenty-five, March fifteenth. So...
It's six twenty-one.
Six twenty-one, so we need to take a break for...
Report be a recess.
Recession.
Next time we're going to put down six twenty-one.
I was trying to say I'd do six fifteen next time. I'm not the one who said that time.
It never goes this way. It never goes this way.
Yeah, I've never seen one go this quick.
No, we've never done this. There you go.
Start writing POs tomorrow.
You want me to start?
Yeah, I'm sure he is.
I want to go to Medjoe. What's that hay, but it's got the mountain.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Haven't seen that. It's all right. I'm good with what you got.
That's a different...
That is different.
Five and six is what I used to wear. Business. Yeah, well, it is good.